Beginning with the Arts Commission, and then a no parking zone, and then I bet you it's under there for the third item. So we'll begin with the Arts Commission. Mr. Berlin.
Thank you, sir. Interest has been expressed in forming some kind of a Raymore Arts Commission to promote the arts and help organize arts events in Raymore. The city charter does allow for the formation of commissions by the city council, as the city council may wish to do. So if the ca- we thought we'd put this on the agenda for your, for discussion. If the council is interested in doing that, we would bring forward a formal resolution or ordinance to do that. And items that you might want to consider would be how many that you might want to include on such a commission, whether it be appointment by ward or at-large, length of term. So we thought we would just throw that open for council input and discussion.
Councilmember Wesco?
Okay, I think it's gonna stand. I am in 100% support for an arts commission. My only request is, is that I think it should be a standalone board, much like our planning and zoning and our parks board. And I think it should answer to our economic development department.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank staff for bringing this forward. This is exactly one of the topics that we discussed in the roundabout feature subcommittee here recently, and it's gonna be part of my report of, or a little surprise there. But yeah, we did discuss this, that the roundabout feature brought on those discussions, and that was one of them. And I would concur with, with Mr. Wesco that, you know, that I support a arts committee. I would like to see it standalone also. Staff brings up some very good points as far as size, terms, and all of that. Very valid discussions that I think we should have. I'd like to see it come forward, definitely.
Other, Councilmember Stevens?
Any idea what the scope and the cost of something like this would be? I'm sure you haven't gotten that far yet, but I just kinda wondered how it might affect the budget going down the road.
I don't, I don't think actually having a board or commission, just forming one, would, would have a, a cost of any kind. Now, they might make recommendations which might have a cost, but that would be up to the council to approve any expenditures that would be recommended.
Councilmember Huber?
Just what do you mean when you say an arts commission? The reason I ask is, you know, everyone that's here knows I'm very much interested in the history of Raymore, and we have the form, you might say, of an arts commission, in that we've got a museum that, there's only four museums in Cass County: Harrisonville, Abelton, Pleasant Hill, and Raymore. And I don't see any support for that, and I'm just wondering how much support we would get for an arts council. How is it any different, somebody doing a little nab of, of painting, and somebody that is keeping the history of Raymore alive? I'm, I'm a little confused as to why you're not making it more encompassing and talking about, quote, "the amenities" that would be coming to Raymore.
Councilmember Kellogg, and then Councilmember Wesco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to answer that, and I'll address the chair, try to stay in order here, but to address your question, as far as scope, what we discussed in the subcommittee was a commission to continue on the work with what we envisioned what's going on down in the roundabout, a art feature, public art. That's, that's a term that we used quite often and all the time in that subcommittee. And then it goes back to our last retreat that we had at Foxwood Springs, when we were coming up with our goals and, and our ideas and that. And part of mine that I, that I spewed out was public art, beautification and that. And I am a supporter of public art, and I'll show you some examples later on. But when it comes to public art, my envision as a council member and as a citizen is a structure, not a, a finger painting on a street or something like that, something that, that stands the test of time, something that is able to identify Raymore as, as a unique community, as somebody that supports the arts that help to beautify and add culture to the city. No other city in Cass County, I believe, has anything like what we're talking about, what we've discussed, having a, a feature, or several features or whatever, sorta like, you know, not, I'm not, I don't wanna say fountains like Kansas City, but Kansas City is known for their fountains. They're also known for their shuttlecocks. Now, that's public art. The shuttlecocks is public art, as far as I'm concerned. And that's the kind of scope that I'm talking about, and that I think about when we are discussing the, the arts commission, putting them in charge of stuff like that, that will tie different areas in the, of the city. And again, like Mr. Berlin brought up, you know, how would it be comprised, you know, whether it be at-large or representative wards or stuff like that, that these art pieces could be throughout the city. And like what Mr. Wesco was discussing during the subcommittee, is that we could tie these together to have, you know, cohesiveness throughout the city. So if people wanted to or wish to, to come here and view and see our art, they could go through the city at, at different destinations to, to get that experience. That's kind of where I'm at.
Councilmember Wesco?
And if I could just add on to what Councilmember Kellogg was saying, you know, I, I kind of related the story of the, of the cows that Kansas City did a few years ago. I don't know if you remember that there were all these cows all over Kansas City that various organizations decorated. And what you could do is you could actually get a map, and you could go throughout the different places within the city, and you could see these cows that were artistically done. You know, there were quite a few of them in Swill Park, around Starlight Theater, places like that. So we kind of envisioned something very similar with our town, that, you know, it started off as the, the roundabout feature, but we have miles and miles of trails. Why not take some of these trails and put art features all along them, so as people are using, whether it's the walking trails or the running trails or what have you, you know, they're, they can stop and appreciate various artistic features that we've put in there. And one of our ideas was to involve students out at the school. And so where we could change the features from place to place, so that it's all ever-evolving, and that it actually would be a destination spot, so people would actually come to Raymore and say, you know, "I wanna go and, and take a look," you know, "at what's going on." And to add to what this commission would also, could also do, you know, we've talked about having, you know, a civic center with maybe a community stage, you know, to where we could have community theater done here, where we could have a Friday night jazz festival or, or musicians playing, you know, there's various venues. That commission would be in charge of those type of programs.
Councilmember Delgawad, and then Morehead?
Just to piggyback off that a little bit, I kind of envisioned this as something that would tie together a lot of things that are already getting started in our community, and it would kind of give us a central place, a central group of people to organize a lot of what we've already started. Like Mr. Kellogg said, when we had our visioning, our goal-setting meeting, you know, there was a lot of talk about bringing arts and culture into the city and wanting to encourage that. And we had the felt display out here in front of City Hall. That's art, you know, just kind of a, a group or a place that would tie together some of these displays. It could include finding a place in a business, or at maybe our new civic center, or here at City Hall, for, like, the garden club to display photos. I know the garden club has had people come out and talked to them before about how to take pictures of flowers and landscaping and things like that. I think my big, my big thought on it was just a group, again, to tie it together, encouraging citizens, encouraging businesses in Raymore to take a look at art, to get more art decorating, if you wanna say that word, the city, giving people something to look at, giving people from out of town places, destinations within the city, or a reason to come to Raymore. Parks is already starting this with the art festival they're planning in the park, so it just, it seems like a great time to kind of have a central place, a central group of people to kind of be looking at art in the city, and how we're going to get it here, keep it here, display it, and that sort of thing.
Uh, just a second.
Just, just since Councilmember Delgawad mentioned this, this is just a draft, but Mr. Kennedy gave this to me just before the meeting. This is a draft flyer for the event that is being worked on in June, just for your information.
Okay, Councilmember Morehead?
Well, and I just, I guess I'm kind of mirroring a lot of what's been said. For me, this is an opportunity for Raymore to, to display itself, both to ourselves as well as surrounding areas. It's an opportunity to draw people together. We bring a lot of people together for athletics. These are some other options that could be, could be utilized to bring different people together. I do wanna say that of the six major cities in Jackson County, Kansas City, they have a task force directly under the mayor. Grandview has an arts council that is separate, and I can't remember the one that's actually a private venture. I wanna say that might be Lee Summit, but most of these, of Lee Summit, Blue Springs Independent, these areas, they have standalone boards that are equal to their park board, and they see the value to this. And I really wanna encourage this as well. This is an opportunity for our economic development department to be able to work with other people to, to help put ourselves out into the community. So I'm very supportive of this as well.
Councilmember Huber?
Are you all talking about permanent features like sculptures, or are you talking about portable things? For instance, Mr. Morehead, you and I both have relatives that in Grants Pass, and as you know, they have, during the summer, they have two weeks where they have the bears come out. And what they do, the bears, and one of them, a bear will be standing and will look like a Viking with all the things. Another bear will be, look like Caesar. They have all kinds of these things, and they keep it out, and they do it every year, and it's done through the economic development. And they do it every year for about two weeks, and the different businesses then will have all of these different bears. Some will be standing up, some will be falling down, whatever it is, that they are, they are different. So are you talking about something like that, or are you talking about something that's a permanent statue? Or are you talking about both?
Councilmember Kellogg, and then Morehead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To answer that, one of the things that we said when we went into subcommittee, that nothing was off limits, and sky's the limits. So I still feel that way with that question. Kind of what you're talking about there with the bears, is I think is very similar to what Mr. Wesco spoke about with the cows. That was a very temporary display, but it went on for several months, and it was a huge draw. I know that down in San Antonio, they also did one down there, but I believe they used ox or possibly horses. You know, several communities have done it. I've got a picture that I'll show later on, how Omaha did it. But as far as arts, when, when we're talking about arts, like what Mrs. Delgawad talked about, was like jazz festi- jazz festivals, plays, stuff like that, that, I, I consider that art also, you know. That art council could, could do that. Now, tying in history, absolutely. That, that's not ruled out. You know, I would never support anything that would rule out, you know, the history of Raymore, because it's very deep, you know, and I, I think that's a good starting point. And that's part of the, the discussions we had also, is involving, if we could, the history, and then also involving the future. So when you're asking if it's temporary or permanent, I, I would say yes to both. Absolutely. Ruling nothing out. Sky's the limit, you know. The only thing that, that stops us is ourselves.
Councilmember Morehead, and then Wesco?
Well, and, and that's the purpose of this, of this board, to bring in different members representative from each ward. Arts would be not just singular, but plural. It's visual and creative arts, it's music, it's theater. And I'd actually be more interested in not trying for us to define it, but to create the board and then let them come back to us and say, "This is the scope of what we feel we can offer. These are the departments we can work with. Let them come back and see what they put together." I mean, and again, that's what we do with our other boards. We, we go ahead and give them the ability to come back and let them tell us what they can do and what they can't. And this would just be another example of that. So it could be the hardened, the hard art, which would be like the monuments and the plaques and things like that, but it could be by definition about anything else.
Remember Wesco, and then Huber?
You know, as we were exploring this topic in our subcommittee, you know, we really, we realized that Raymore truly has an opportunity to set itself apart from all the other communities that are around us, you know. We have the ability with this type of a project to really create something that's, that's lasting, create a legacy, create something that would cause people to come to Raymore. We can pay homage to the past, we can pay homage to the future. And that was one of the things that, that we loved about the idea of getting high school students involved, you know, because it's, it's the art, the artists in our community that are helping to develop the art within the community, you know. So it was just a great way to tie the school and the city of Raymore together even, even better than what it is now. And, you know, with a project that, that could be very important to the city, I think it's very important that it, it not be a subcommittee of another committee, you know. That's why I would, I really think it needs to be a standalone, because it, it doesn't need to be an afterthought. It needs to be, you know, it has its own, has its own place. And if it is a subcommittee of the park board, or the subcommittee of, you know, whoever else, you know, I think it diminishes the arts commission. So that's why I think it should be standalone, and the economic development department is the perfect place for it, because it truly is an outreach that the city can use to reach out to businesses and to get them to come into the community.
Councilmember Huber?
Are you all familiar with Peculiar's Art Council? They've had one for years, and they get a lot of recognition for that. I don't know exactly how they have set it up, but we wouldn't be the first, because Peculiar has been doing it for a long time. And you might check out with them and see how they do it, whether the council, I mean, the Board of Aldermen are involved in it, or whether it is a private group, or how they handle it. But I know they get a lot of publicity from it, and they've been doing it, what, 10 years or longer? So we wouldn't be first, we would just be second.
What's that? Oh. Doctor?
I'm, I'm fully supportive. Also, one thing I'd like to add, and I don't think we would put this in the charge to this group, should it be appointed, but I would like to see us have some implied expectation that they would also have some fundraising mission to look at private funding for doing some of the things they would like to do, which I think would, would be a great help for the city.
And I'm gonna take a point of approval to the chair, because you bring up something that I was gonna ask later. Can a city commission be chartered as a 501(c)(3), or would that have to be a private?
I'd have to check into that.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm not familiar with a, a city group being a 501(c)(3), but that doesn't mean it can't be done. I just have to look at it.
Well, and, and the thought there, and tying off of what Councilmember Pifo was saying, is that funding for art can naturally come from the community itself, too. And I think people would be more amiable to donating to a 501(c)(3) than to donate, in effect, to the city. So, Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Pifo, for that. You just spurred a thought that I'd probably forget it during my report. One thing that we did discuss during the subcommittee meetings was, you know, when we were really brainstorming, I mean, we really did brainstorm, one of the things that came out of that was, you know, this has the opportunity to start so many different things, you know. And one thing that came up is that when a developer comes in or a development comes up, they are required to set aside like 10% of the land for public use, okay, whether that be parks or greenways or whatever. But there's nothing stopping the city from us, or the city from requiring a certain amount of money to be applied towards public art, or the art council, too, you know. I mean, I, I think that we could prob- investigate or, or look at something like that, too, if, if a developer, if we wanted a developer to donate to public art instead of green space, you know. Alls we'd need to do is, is set the policy in place to, to do that. So there, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about different funding mechanisms, and that's one I think is worthy of, of investigation.
Other comments? Councilmember Boehner?
I would just like to voice my appreciation for seeing this, this evening, and also to voice my support for it. As an architect, the arts and both performance and visual are very near and dear to me. I've found that public discourse over particularly sensitive issues can sometimes be done through the arts in ways that make it non-confrontational and, and very beneficial for those that participate in that type of discourse. It, it gladdens my heart to see us moving forward in this direction and to see such, such strong support for it.
I'm, I'm hearing the great support from the council, the, of moving forward. I've heard it suggested that we, the, the arts commission be standalone, that reports to the economic development department. I, I think, Eric, you suggested that we, the, the council consider how many members and how they, how it's structured?
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll just throw out for, at least to start discussion,
Okay, thank you.
perhaps a, a five-member commission, at-large membership, three-year terms.
Comments from the councilman?
I guess I would, I would look for, particularly if you're looking at fundraising, I would look for a little larger, at least, you want an odd number, but I'd at least, I'll, I'll call and raise you two. Let's go for seven, at least.
[laughing] Other comments from the council? Councilmember Morehead?
Well, I'm, I'm supportive from the idea of two per ward. We've done that with other boards, with the complexity of some of the projects that could potentially come from this. The more, the better. I'm not, I mean, our, we have other boards with even numbers that don't have voting, major voting problems. All that can be administratively dealt with. But I like the more, the merrier. I would go two per ward, and that way we get some sampling and representation across Raymore.
Councilmember Delgawad?
I like the idea of this being a freestanding board, but I wonder, because a lot of our art stuff is probably going to happen in the parks, or maybe in conjunction with Parks and Rec, do we need to have someone that's, that crosses both boards, representative from Parks and Rec, or from the parks board on this board?
Councilmember Kellogg?
I guess I would address that in kind of a selfish tone from Ward One, that doesn't have any parks. I would definitely, you know, support and wish to see two members from each ward, so that each ward has representation, you know, because, you know, Ward, Ward One is not fortunate enough to have any land really left, other than the, the future stuff that's out there for, for a park. Yeah, most of, I, I'd see most of the, not most, but quite a bit of the art going into, into park areas, but I don't think, I would want to limit, you know, any art form just to parks, you know. I, I, when I see art, you know, in different places, I, I see it in the middle of boulevards. I, I see it along, outside of airports and stuff like that, not just in the parks. But I'd support two from each ward.
Councilmember Wesco?
I would actually, I, I actually like the idea of seven. My suggestion would be one from each ward, so that would be four, and then three at-large members. And then the council and the park board have the option to have a liaison to the arts council, non-voting, but just as a liaison. So then that way, the information can be communicated both ways. But, you know, just, just seeing some of the other issues that we have, sometimes filling vacancies, you know, with two per ward, I, I like the idea of the one per ward and then the three at-large, 'cause in that way, I think we can get a, a good cross-sampling, but then also have people who might be highly invested in it, that might come out of, you know, one, one individual ward.
Councilmember Huber?
Where do you plan to display this art? Is it going to be on the streets? Is it going to be inside buildings? Is it gonna be limited just to the people that live in, in Raymore? Or how have you thought that part through? Is there going to be a cultural tax thing to follow? How are we going to fund all of this?
Councilmember Boehner?
I think that's really for the commission to decide. The, the other comment I might make is that we, we'd be very careful that we don't, again, that we don't pigeonhole art to simply sculpture or painting, or, you know, something like that, but that we really allow the commission to consider art as, as the whole body of performance and visual, graphic, all, all, all the arts, all the fine arts, that they have that opportunity to look at the whole thing, instead of just narrowing it down that way.
Other comments? Well, we, we shouldn't be taking votes, but I do like the idea of an odd number of people on a, on a board like this. Seven is a nice number, and it can also be nine. I, I could envision two from each ward plus one at-large, given that. But you don't wanna get too large a board either, because then you're never gonna come up with a, with an answer. So the, the one per ward plus three at-large, I think would be, at least in my mind, would be a, a good compromise. Councilmember Kellogg?
Just a quick question of thought. Would this be done by ordinance to set this commission up to where the future council, if it grew into something that needed a, a bigger group, that they, that the council at that time could just change the ordinance?
Should be done by resolution.
That's kind of the legal question?
Um, I, well, certainly we could build flexibility in. I'm, I'm thinking, just looking at the charter language, that maybe an ordinance would be the way to go. It just does say that the council shall have such power and authority as is conferred upon them by ordinance or law.
Oh, okay.
So I'm just thinking we'd probably do it by ordinance.
That's, I, I was thinking the same thing with the odd number. I, I do like that.
Well, as I was saying that, I was seeing a bunch of heads nod, so, Councilmember?
Well, then, I, I, since I was the one that picked the even number, I'll, I'll just go ahead and say this. I, I'm fine going with the seven as well. I mean, the idea here is, we're not trying to-
We could go with six.
Well, true, true. But we're not trying to bake the whole cake tonight. I mean, the idea is, we're trying to get this project started, and the idea, you know, let's see what comes of it. We do seven, if we, you know, politely put, if we feel it needs to go to eight or nine, hey, guess what? We can do that. I mean, you know, I, I don't wanna, you know, Councilman Boehner's right, we don't pigeon toe this project. We're trying to, let's be as open-ended as possible to let this get out there and, and really breathe and grow. So I, I'm willing to change and go to the seven as well, and I think that'll make it fairly harmonious, here.
Other comments from the council?
One quick question.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Because we've got so many in the audience tonight. Thank you all for showing, everybody. As far as for our commissions, is there an age limit that citizens could have to be to serve?
Charter doesn't speak of an age limit.
It does, or doesn't?
It does not.
It does not. I, I would like to investigate, you know, that we involve, you know, even high school teenage kids. I mean, we, we get a good turnout here, you know. It might be because they're required to by their assignment, but-
I, I, I think it's a little bit more assured than "might be."
[laughing] I'm being nice to them. But I, I would, you know, if, if we can involve, you know, all age, you know, I don't wanna say all, but, but if we can involve, you know, the youth in, in something like this, too, I think there's a lot of potential there and a lot of value.
Councilmember Wesco?
To add on to what Councilmember Kellogg said, maybe have one of our at-large members be a representative of the high school, somebody that they designate to serve on the council. So that could either be faculty, you know, any staff or student. Just, just an idea.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Huber just made a comment to me that it is, it'd possibly not be a, a member from Raymore. I do know that we've dealt with this, you know, in the recent past, within the last 12 months, that some of our commissions do have commissioners, commission members from other cities. Would that be, would that be, would there be leeway for that here, or, or would the council, would the council have the, the authority and luxury of stipulating that it has to be a Raymore resident?
I think that would be a council decision.
Eric, is there any other information you need from the council to start moving on something on that?
No, sir. We'll, we'll bring something forward in accordance with the discussion tonight, and we'll, y'all can take it from there.
Okay, fair enough. Well, thank you, everybody. We'll move on to the next item, a proposed no-parking zone. Eric?
Thank you, sir. This is an item that was actually brought forward by Councilmember Pifo, so I'll introduce it, and then Councilmember Pifo may have some, some comments. Councilmember Boehner, you may have received some comments from residents of your ward as well. Residents of the Creekmore Development have expressed concern about a vehicle that's parked on southbound Foxridge Drive between the entrance to the Creekmore Development and 58 Highway. Vehicles can legally park in that area. While no accidents have occurred yet, to our knowledge, due to the existence of parking there, we, staff has examined the area, and, and we do believe- there, we, staff has examined the area, and we do believe that striping Foxridge Drive for four lanes between the Creekmore Development, Granada, roughly Granada Drive, and 58 Highway, and designating the right-hand lane for both northbound and southbound between the Creekmore entrance and 58 Highway, has no parking, would improve the safety of motorists who travel that segment of road. If the council is in agreement after discussion, we can bring forward an ordinance for your formal consideration.
Thank you. Councilmember Wesco?
I have actually, this situation has been brought to my attention, and I'm not the, you know, Ward Three representative, and actually, I was at a breakfast meeting, and somebody brought this to my attention. And so, I went and looked at the vehicle. This vehicle actually has no trespassing signs posted in the windows of the vehicle. So, it is very apparent that there is no intention to move this vehicle, because they have the big no trespassing signs that most people put on their fence to keep people out, in the driver and the passenger windows. So, it is quite the embarrassment.
Councilmember Pifo?
Yeah, let me go ahead and talk to this, since this is something that I had talked with the city manager about a while back. I don't know about Councilmember Boehner, but this is the item that I have heard the most about in my brief tenure as a city council member, and second place is 163rd Street through to Kentucky, in case you wondered, but this is the one I have heard the most about. I think that says a lot about what a great city this is to live in, okay, because certainly this is not a cataclysmic item, but I think there are safety issues, and if you drive Foxridge, particularly south, where you're coming down that single lane that is curbed on both sides, oftentimes, you will have someone who is doing 25 or 30, it's a 35 zone, cars will build up behind the person, they get to the end of that funnel, it opens out into four lanes unmarked, and I have seen a number of times, folks just get kind of stuck in that right-hand lane, or not know what to do with a vehicle parked there. So, I think it is an issue, certainly. The other issue, I think, is if you look at the area, and you can look at your map, there's ample parking for Walgreens on the east side of the street there, there's ample parking for that strip mall where the Dairy Queen is, most of you, I think, are probably familiar with that at least. So, there's plenty of parking, there's not a real need for on-street parking, and I think there are some potential safety issues there.
Other comments from the council? Councilmember Boehner?
I would just echo and agree with Councilman Pifo.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm seeing lots of head nods in the affirmative, so we'll go ahead and move over to that.
We will do so.
All right, and that takes us to our last item, the Roundabout Feature Committee Report. And Councilmember Wesco, are you going to be leading this one?
You know, actually, I'm going to go ahead and let Councilmember Kellagh, since he actually created the visual for tonight, I'm going to go ahead and let him take this and kind of run with this.
Councilmember Kellagh, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Now, I will say, before we get started, that this project went, you know, all the way down twists and turns and various paths, and there were things that we were like, well, we don't want to do this, and then we circled right around to it, and like, no, we want to do that. The one thing that we never deviated from was having student involvement within the project, and Kevin actually developed a visual that actually will allow us to kind of see where we could have student involvement with the feature.
Councilmember?
Well, while he's setting this up, I'm going to say, no, you know, I'm going to warm up to this project a lot more if there's music in the background while he's doing the presentation.
I'll sing. You want me to sing? I'll be really bad. I'm good at ABCs and-
You want music? Ozzy?[882.12][882.12](laughing). Anyway, I'll start out. First of all, to acknowledge the subcommittee, I myself, Mr. Wesco, Chair, Ms. Abdelgawad, committee member, then we also brought in Mrs. Laura Richardson from the Raypek School District, the Art Department Director, and then also, Mr. Boehner, Councilman Boehner sat in on just about, I think, 95% of our meetings, and thank everybody for their hard work and dedication. Also, thank the mayor for setting up the committee. It was very valuable to us, and I think the city's going to reap a lot of benefits out of it. Also, thank Mr. Mike Crass for his help and his input, and the meetings that we invited him to, he did come and gave us some very good input. So, thank you, Mike, and I also spoke with Chief Zimmerman, to have her pay attention what was going on, and if she's seen anything that we were doing that would lend to making an unsafe situation, that she'd give us a heads up, and it's very nice to have her on board also. With that, the subcommittee met for approximately two and a half months before tonight's meeting. We would meet every Monday, every other Monday night, just before the council work sessions. We noticed those meetings up and made them public. We invited and welcomed the public in for those. Unfortunately, we did not get much participation, but, you know, we did talk with our constituents through emails and phone calls and stuff like that, so they were paying attention. So, anyway, we started out talking about what we envisioned for the roundabout, with all of our concerns we had for the welcoming feature. We listed those concerns, and which they included, first and foremost, safety and function of the feature. We didn't want to create something that would create a distraction, we didn't want to create something that would create an obstruction, or something that would lend to an unsafe condition at the roundabout. You know, we didn't want to negate the safety of the roundabout by putting something there that would be unsafe. So, that was paramount. That was the first thing that we discussed, and that was always in our view and always in our focus. Then we also discussed how we'd involve the community in order to get a buy-in for this project. That's what we spoke about tonight with, you know, involving the school district, and that was kind of key to us, is that we wanted to involve the community. So, anyway, that was discussed, and that's how we dealt with that. Then we also discussed how big of an area, the physical area, that we had to work with in the roundabout, and we were given a report from staff that we had approximately eight-foot diameter in the middle of the roundabout area for this feature. And that's where we jumped off from, was right there. We have no idea how much money we have, that's something that the council would decide, so, but we thought about that, and we looked at those things. Then from there, we discussed the main aspects of our feature that we wanted. We wanted something, in our discussions, we wanted something that set us aside, that set us out, that made us unique, something that no other city in the area has, or has attempted to do, something that would possibly, you know, like what Mr. Morehead said to me in a discussion we had several weeks ago, that when Grandview built their arch, their arch across their main street, they got a, I believe, a national award out of that for their art pieces. So, you know, it brought national recognition to the city of Grandview for them to do what they did, and that's kind of what we are hoping for also in this, in this feature. So, we wanted something that was unique. We discussed, of course, the first thing that came up was fountain. We collectively decided that a fountain really is not what we are looking for, but we did not rule out a water feature. You know, I heard from my constituents that a fountain is only usable during the mild weather months, it's unusable during the winter months. It also lends to higher maintenance cost and this and that, and it just, it doesn't, I, my own opinion, and what I expressed, is that it didn't set us out uniquely away from Kansas City, just to put in another fountain, but a water feature was not ruled out, and it was always discussed as a possibility. Of course, then, and I'm going through my notes, I'm sorry, but something, we wanted something that was identifiable, something that had a shape, or a form, or a function, or some kind of uniqueness about it, that would identify Raymore, you know, kind of like the shuttlecock. When you think about the shuttlecock, and especially like the picture that I have up here, if you look at that, you know, when I showed that during the subcommittee, first thing out of Mr. Boehner's mouth was Minneapolis-St. Paul, and that's where that's at, you know. Anybody that's been there knows that's there. Then, also, you folks may not know where that one's at, but I do, because that's near and dear to my heart, that's in the downtown of Des Moines, Iowa. That's something that they put up, and this is kind of the idea that I was talking about during the subcommittee, is that I would like to see something be built or constructed, that if somebody wanted to come to Raymore and have their picture taken next to it, that we just hit a home run right there. That's the kind of scope that, you know, not the size, but something on that level that, you know, that identifies us. Right here, oddly enough, may not know where this is, some of you may, that's in downtown San Antonio, and ironically enough, guess where it's at? Next to the River Market, right in the center of a roundabout. So, anyway, that's, you know, to answer your question, Ms. Hubach, I don't rule anything out. Also, some of the things that we talked about is, Mr. Wesco brought up the cows. This here is in Omaha, the O and the exclamation point. These were set throughout the city, and they were done just very similarly to like what the cows were in Kansas City. They had artists come in and paint them, and they changed them out, they moved them around. People went on tours to see these. I have no idea where this is at.[1326.23][1326.23](laughing) It's just something that we looked at, you know, as far as form, and then we got into, when we started discussion, features of a roundabout feature. This here shows a lighting effect, to where it helps, not helps, but it enhances it during the nighttime hours. One thing that I discussed during the subcommittee was that, and thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Cutright, for being here tonight, because you did bring this to my attention, that the roundabout is a dark area, and when you're driving up to it, you really can't see that the roundabout is there until you're there. So, we discussed having a lighting feature inside, or part of, a welcoming feature, and I think that there would be able to be seen off in the distance to draw the attention there, and then when you get there, you know, it serves many different purposes. Another feature that, I don't know where it's at, looks like somewhere tropical, but, and then, also, out of nowhere, I just found this on the internet, this is just a wall, if you can see it there, it just shows in different colors, and we thought, you know, as, something like that, if you had something like that, as you drive at it, and the sunlight itself makes that dazzle, and it just kind of changes the colors and that, so. Then also, another example of how lighting can be decorative, you know, Mr. Boehner's seen this, and he just, his eyes just popped, it's like, wow, you know, that looks like it's painted, it's not, that's just texture of stone and metal reflecting light. So, you know, the light shines, well, they've got sconces on that, on that one there in particular, so it shines up and down, and they have lighting on the bases also. So, you know, there's a lot of decoration that a person or people can do with lighting, so, that's that. When I was going through Texas over January, I was there twice, and when I was in Houston, I saw these. I had to take a picture of this, because this was really neat, you know, they're just something that, to show function and how you can do things. As we went through those discussions about what public art is, means to us, and that, and how we would convey this in what we were doing, Mr. Boehner spoke up, and he says, you know, he says, there's a company that does some really neat work that he's familiar with. He grabbed my iPad and searched the internet, and this is what he came up with. This is, I don't know what material it is, but I'll say it's acrylic, it's kind of a plastic, multi-colored, and it's lit up, this is inside of a building somewhere, and I would imagine this here's about 16 feet tall, and it's just kind of a really wispy, multi-colored thing that looks like a tornado, or some way, you know, it's just a neat feature. So, that kind of really struck me as something that is just really neat, and it has always been in the back of my mind. So, during those discussions, we broke, and we were charged with going home, and, well, I was charged with going home writing this report, and coming up with, collecting all of those ideas and those concepts, excuse me, and coming back the next meeting with our ideas on paper. So, forgive me, this is my refrigerator art, okay? You can laugh all you want, but this is where this is going. That's not it, that's not it. Right there. I am not an artist, but that's what I came up with. It was something that fit all of the ideas that we had, it had the opacicity, so you could see through it as you're driving up onto it. It had multi-colors, so that way, if it was lit, the idea was that acrylic that Mr. Boehner showed us, that it could be lit up, and it could be seen, and it could be decorated with lights, and this and that, and that it's in a shape of a cylinder. But, anyway, if a person wanted to, they could even have a water feature in there, if you can kind of see my water feature. So, anyway, that's where that idea led to. After we had that, I'm forgetting, and I apologize, we also had an idea about this time from Mrs. Laura Richardson from the school district, that she came up with this idea of this, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Boehner, reverse casting moldings of sculptures that the schools could sponsor or involve the kids in with, and we came up with this idea of having what we called totem poles, but I didn't really like that term, and I kind of said shish kebabs, but they were planning on making plaques, four-sided plaques into a cube with designs, whether it be faces, or shapes, or whatever it is, and connecting those, and having them stacked, one, two, three, four, maybe five, on a pole, and having several poles around. So, anyway, Mrs. Richardson went back to her class at her own expense, and God bless her for her hard work and all of that, and I'll show you what she did. She came back with some castings to show of what can be done. This is done in clay, but the idea was, is to do a reverse casting, that's a reverse cast, and then you just use molten metal to make a form that you would have on a plaque, and you bolt them together, or however you do that, and then that would be the art form there. As our discussions went on, was that Mrs. Richardson came back the very next week, and she was, had this sign of disappointment in her eyes, and she says, you know, she says, I really can't do that, she says, because they've done something like that down in peculiar. And Sonia and I says, well, we're not going to rule that out yet, but anyway, we took on the idea that I drew up, as far as a vessel like that, and Sonia came up with the idea, well, why can't we have that on a base? So, that lent it to having a base, and I'll show you here in a little bit what this looks like. So, we had a cylinder base with the forms that you're seeing here installed on top of them. That naturally led to, well, now, we can take that base, and we can put those reverse castings in the sides of the base, so we kept with involving the students. So, it came down to another revision, and that's when I went home, and I made a 3D model, and I'll go ahead and pull that apart, and show you what this here kind of looks like. I'll take this here with me, so you can see it, and you can hear. Will this come further, Jim? Will this come further, Jim? But anyway, I came back with a 3D model. I'll move some of the stuff so you can see. And got some ideas here. As you can see here, I tried to build this as close to scale as I could, and I only had a five-gallon bucket, so I'll say the diameter is approximately eight feet. There's my disclaimer for the lawyer in the crowd. I used that measurement with what our discussion was, approximately three foot tall, so that way we're not obstructing the line of sight. So the height of the base is sort of approximately three, three and a half feet tall. Then, I formed some kind of decorative things to be representative of my refrigerator art up there, and this here's, this particular material was plastic, it's textured, it grabs the light, when I turn the light on, and you'll see what it does. Also, if you look into the base right here, you see kind of what my, what our envision was, that if they wanted to make some kind of a reverse casting into a plaque, that it could be placed inside of a pre-set, recessed hole. Go ahead.
And the thought behind this was, is that every year that the students make these, we can change these out, and the ones that we take out, we can actually put them in various places throughout the city, thus creating that destination, and that, okay, now you need to go to Rec Park to see, you know, this group, or you need to walk through Hawkridge Park to see this group. So that's kind of what the thought was behind these, as the students develop more and more of these, they can be placed in different places throughout the city.
And one more thing, talking to the high school teacher, she actually said that they would probably make a clay version of what we would make metal, and find a place at the high school to display them as well. So it would be displayed there, and also here in town. And, you know, with it just being a two-by-two square, it would be very versatile to put on a wall somewhere, or to put together into cubes in our shish kebabs, kind of as we talked about originally, and stack them with spacers in between, and maybe have along a trail, or, you know, something like that. So we're thinking it would be really versatile to be able to move and use in other places in the city in the future.
Yes, thank you for dovetailing in there, because I'm forgetting everything. Now I'm really away from my notes, so please. So, came up with this, and I have added a lighting feature to this that we discussed about similarly. Another thing that I will say is that I attempted to make a lighting feature to shine onto the base, but it's very difficult for me, because a flashlight is a lot of light. But anyway, there were discussions that, if you can envision spotlights down here shining onto the metal, grabbing that prism effect off the metal, and creating its different colors and that, that, you know, that's something that we did discuss also. Now I'll go ahead and turn this here on, and I'm the one that's gonna get wet.
Wait a minute, there's water and electricity involved?
Yeah, there's water and electricity, I left the fire out. But I'll go ahead and turn this here on for a lighting effect, and I took the liberty also to make some wispy-ness features out of metal also, so I'll go ahead and change those out here in a little bit, so you can see how metal will do. Jim, or somebody, can you shut some of the lights down, so, because...
The things that we wanted to do with the light was, we actually wanted this feature to be able to be seen from the highway, so that when people drove by, they would see it and say, "Hey, you know, there's Raymore."
And this light will fade its colors, and you'll see an idea of, as to what lighting can do. The particular material that I picked here has texture in it, so you're seeing a lot of different colors throughout, and it's breaking up, but anyway. That is, of course, this is not the colored plastic that I showed in the picture, but that is a very difficult thing for me to do. I did look for colored plastic, I could not find any, and so I'm going with this here, and I'll show you the effect as to what light can do. Also, in the case that we did choose to go with a water feature, and here's what we discussed before I even turned this on, as far as a water feature, is kinda like what you see down in the Branson area, down in their newly developed area with the, what's that? The Branson Land, thank you. And the designer that did that was Wet Corporation, I believe they're out of Las Vegas, and they did the Bellagio also, and what they do, they're more of a, what we thought about was a spurt of water, not so much a fountain feature, but just spurts of water, they kinda act as like a dancing water effect, something that could be shut off during the winter months, and we still have the other options here. So, I'll go ahead and turn that on. If I get too wet, it's just me. Now, of course, that's just continual run, but if you can just imagine, you know, three or four fountains there doing that randomly, different heights and that, just adding a little effect, you know, that's kind of the idea. Another thing that, well, since I paid for it, I'll use it, this is, of course, a pump for a fountain that you'd have in your garden, but another thing that might be able to be done, if a person, or if we chose to do it, is to have a different effect. Can you believe that? Let's see if I got it set right. Yeah, I do. Now, as you watch the water as the light changes, it grabs a different effect too. I mean, there's so much that we could do, you know? I mean, again, this is more of a fountain, but, you know, I'm not gonna rule one out, you know, as a subcommittee member, you know? If it's something that we want, by golly, I think we should do it. So anyway, something like that, whether it can be done on the scale of a full scale, I don't know, but there's endless options. So anyway, I'll go ahead, I'll let that water run. What? Mr. Mayor's worried about a lawsuit.
Second your motion.
Thank you, thank you. We have a motion in a second.
That'll be me. And I'm able to throw in some metal here. I'll just pull some of these here out, and I'll just place the metal in, so you can see how metal will grab the light. If we wanted to go with metal, this will show you that. I mean, there was a lot of discussion as to what would happen in the case of an accident in the roundabout, or vandalism, you know? Yeah, those are serious concerns. Don't know how we'd handle that, but that's all stuff that we would discuss during the process of developing that, and determining what we wanted for a feature. But you can see how I've added some metal there, and how it grabs the light, and it kinda gives a different effect. So, that's kinda why I brought that in also. So, but, that's kind of the concept as to what I think we were all talking about. And then, also keep in consideration, that this is eight foot inside of the roundabout is the very center of it. How many feet beyond that, Mike, would there probably be between the feature and the roadway? Do you know?
More, off the top of my head, more than ten and less than twenty.
Okay.
I mean, are you talking just the landscaping area, the landscaping area plus the apron? Because there's a couple...
No, just the landscaping area.
Just the landscaping area, probably about fifteen feet.
About fifteen feet. So, anyway, that's kinda it. I can't think of, let me go through my notes, see if I've forgotten anything here that I planned on talking about, that I'm glossing over. Oh, yes. One thing that I did do after we did this, you can go ahead and turn the lights back on, Jim, thank you, I did make a phone call to, let's get the names right here, a, that company that Mr. Boehner told me about, ArtForm.com, and I spoke with a Ms. Cashley, Toledo, and she put me in with our local representative here in Kansas City, and his name is Mr. Chris Torres, and I sent them everything that I had as far as my sketches, and my notes, and told them as specifically as I could what we were trying to accomplish here, and what our design features were. And they got back in touch with me, and they said, "Yes, this is something that they could do, they've done outside installations before, but this is something that they would only come on board with after we have an architectural design for it, and then they would come in." The only thing they'd be responsible for is the art feature itself. Water feature, they don't do that, that would be something else, but that's the stuff that we could all work through, you know, that's doable. But they would be able to do the art features, they would be able to do the light features, that's their specialty. But they says that they would come on board after we had the design, and so that they know how to build what they need to build. I have not spoken to them since then, but they are very excited about a piece in Kansas City, you know, and they're very willing and happy to work with us on this. So, with that, I think I've covered everything that I could think of, if there's any questions.
All right, we'll open to Florida questions. Councilmember Hubach?
How big would a car be in relationship to that? Would it come up to where you have your little aluminum?
Let's, you know, and...
Each of the pieces of artwork on the side is a two-by-two, is a two-by-two square. So if that helps give you an idea.
From the bottom, from the bottom of the, the top of the table to the bottom of the base, I figured right at three and a half feet.
Three and a half feet.
Yep, yep. And that's the question that I was asking to Mr. Crass a little bit ago, is how much space is between here and the landscaping, and then you've got the apron. Mr. Crass told me that there's about approximately fifteen, well, I'll say that, fifteen feet, it's more than ten but less than twenty, so I'll say approximately fifteen feet. Then you have the apron of the roundabout, which is the feature, or the part of the design of the roundabout.
Councilmember Morehead?
Well, I really want to applaud the three of you for this. I mean, this is...
Four, sorry.
Three, well, yeah. But, I mean, this is fantastic. I mean, I'll tell you, I don't have any specific preference or criteria, I mean, art is art. And for me, you know, one of the big things when we first started talking about this was, when I've driven down 49 Highway at night, I wanna be able to look over and see an announcement of Raymore. And, you know, Councilmember Hubach said something so memorable when we first started talking about stuff, she goes, "Please, as long as it is not a monument," if you remember when you said that, and so for me, you know, shuttlecock, curlers on top of bardol, whatever it is, I don't care. What I want is Raymore to have identification, have its own identity. I'm really excited about this. I love the idea of bringing in the young people to do different things with it. Like I said, I have no preconception of what this needs to be, but I really appreciate and commend everybody for the contribution, and I think this is a great start.
Councilmember Hubach?
One of the things years ago, in coming into Raymore, when we got to the Dean House, and it was all lit up at Christmas, we said we knew we were coming home. Well, now you've got a modern version of that, instead of a house, you've got this sort of the roundabout, and changing the lights and what have you then, so you've got the...
And that is a very valid point. Mrs. Abdalguad even said something about this during our meetings, is that if it was a water feature, you know, we could change the color, and we, this came about on St. Patrick's Day, here we are sitting here, you know, we could change the color to green, green water, you know, we could change it to blue for opening days of the Kansas City Royals, or red for the chefs. But, you know, the possibilities are limitless, as far as I'm concerned on this, you know? It's just a matter of creativity and imagination, you know?
Councilmember Westco?
All I can say is, great googly moogly. That's the rest of that commercial, when you said chefs, so whatever. But one of the things that it does, is it took, it takes something that was a controversial issue in our roundabout, and it actually makes it a statement for Raymore. It becomes something that the city can be proud of. It involves the city, it involves the schools. Basically, it becomes a community project, and then, you know, one of the things that we loved about it was the art features of it, especially where the students would have involvement, then it actually brings art throughout the city. So it's not just, you know, the roundabout feature, it actually becomes truly the beginning of the art through the city. So it's kind of the gateway to, you know, Raymore.
One thing that was of concern, that if we lit this up, and like I said, the Cutrights are back here, and they live right behind this, if we would light this up, if it would shine into their houses. And I'm confident, and I did ask that question of the folks I spoke with at Light Art, that if lighting is done properly, it will not, and it should not dazzle or shine into neighbors' houses. So, you know, those concerns were addressed, and I'm confident that a good reputable contractor that knows what they're doing can do this, and do this right, and make it beautiful. Another thing that, you know, as far as the light, is that as you see this, you know, and I'm trying to vision this from 49, you know, and every time I go down there, is how much room, you know, can we take down those trees out there, you know? But I think, you know, if it's done right, and with a good lighting and that, that it will be visible from 49. It'll definitely be visible as you're going down Lucy Webb and Dean, you know, that way it's, you're drawn to that. Then also, you know, if it's done to where it's opaque, I use that term, so you can see through it as you're coming up onto it, you know? The function of a roundabout is pay attention to the left. That's very true. Don't pay attention to the right. But as a motorcyclist, and fellow motorcyclists also, we are trained and taught to drive safely, ride safely, look three miles ahead if you can see through, that you're not looking far enough. So, you know, I, you know, that was my main thing as far as safety, is that the drivers could see through it before they got there, so that they could see an oncoming car if need be, so...
Councilmember Abdalguad, then Hubach?
I was just gonna say, one of the biggest things that we heard from people, even in my ward, you know, talking about the roundabout, is we wanna be able to see, we don't want something that's gonna obstruct the view. And in our committee, we talked about, well, you don't really need to see across it, but people just have a level of comfort with being able to see through it. So we wanted something that people could at least have a line of sight through. And then one of the other things we talked about as far as safety was not having any standing water. So we tried with both of the water features to, you know, the different versions of water feature that we talked about, having them where they would have drains that recycled the water, so there wouldn't be any standing water in there to attract bugs, or rodents, or animals, you know, to be crossing the road into the middle of the roundabout. So that was just a couple of other things that we heard from people, and talked about and considered while we were working on it.
Yes, and that is, that from, when, that was when Mr. Crass came into and gave input, is that you don't have to have a base, you can have an under-level basin for your water too, and, you know, that's, it's all in the design process, so...
Councilmember Hubach?
If that is three and a half, then you're talking about an eight-foot structure probably from the base to the top then. And what's it going to be made of so that we know that ice will not break anything? Is it, it's not gonna be made out of glass, it's gonna be made out of metals of some kind, or what?
I guess that's still up for discussion. There has been no plans as far as making this out of concrete, making this out of fiberglass. We did ask Mr. Crass his opinion on that, and he alluded to that, you know, this could be done, you know, there, I believe there's fiberglass inner stuff, and then we could put a facade on it, whether it be stone, stucco, or whatever, am I correct?
Councilmember Boehner? If I may, oh, go ahead.
One of the directives that we were given was to just come up with a, kind of a conceptualization, you know, come up with an idea, don't go down the... Don't go down the road too far because if the council wasn't supportive of it, then, you know, we would have done a lot of work, you know, and had to start all over again. So that's why we never talked about, you know, what exactly the spirals or what those things are going to be made out of, because we just wanted to have the conceptual, the idea and to be able to present it that way. And if the council supports it, then that's a conversation we can have later.
Okay. If I may, I have a couple of questions. The first is, is there going to be somewhere on this, welcome to Raymore?
You know, we did discuss that. We did during the very first meeting, you know? Did we want something that said Raymore? Several things came up, and Mr. and Mrs. Cutwright did send me some information. Their son used to be a metal artist and worked in Hayes, Kansas, am I correct? Where did your son work at? Was it Hayes? Hayes. But anyway, they brought up the topic that if we made a sign that says Raymore, depending on which way you're looking at it, you're either reading it the right way or you're reading it backwards. So that kind of led to the discussion, do we want something that says Raymore that is spelled out Raymore? Or do we want something that says Raymore that is by the abstract like this? Is it so identifiable that it says Raymore? Kind of like the shuttlecocks, kind of like the spoon in the cherry, you know?
Okay, thank you.
I'm not saying yes or no.
Eric, what, and I don't remember, what is the approximate budget for this welcoming feature? How much?
That was the amount that was left in the total budget for the roundabout.
And the committee, did you get any estimates on what, how much it would cost to just do the preliminary design work on this, or anything like that?
No, we did not. We haven't called any consultants. The only ones that I've called was to initialize if they could do the work. And they would, you know, I tried to get a ballpark figure out of what they thought it might cost. I also got, tried to get a ballpark figure out of turnaround time. He couldn't even come close. He says, I don't want to tell you anything, I don't want to discuss.
And Councilmember Boehner, I'm not going to put you on the spot to ask you for an estimate of the architectural design and the engineering work on this, but I think we're talking a significantly greater amount of money than 14.3 just for the architectural work. So that's something to take into consideration as the council discusses moving forward with this. Other comments? Okay. How do you want to move forward with this? Because any movement forward, I think, is going to cost some money.
Well, Mr. Mayor, as a councilman, I would like to see it move forward. This ties in to the goals of the council that we set during our retreat as far as public art and beautification. And we've invested a lot of money into a roundabout that it has nothing to offer other than a roundabout. We've got a perfect opportunity here to just put something there that beautifies it and takes a contentious object, like Mr. Wesco says, take a contentious object and make it a showcase.
Okay. Councilmember Wesco?
And I'm supportive of going forward too. And Mr. Crass, not to put you on the spot, you did mention that the staff might have the capability to do something with the base?
If I may, I really don't think we could do this justice.
Okay.
If I may, could I, I have a kind of an idea of a process that may work, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please, please.
I think what we, what could be done from this point is, is work with the, staff could work with the committee to develop a basic scope of services for this. Bring in prospective firms to a pre-proposal meeting. I would ask Mr. Kellogg and the committee to do this presentation. And then as part of the final submittals, have the firm submit a rendering or some other things of how you turn this into reality. I think Mr. Kellogg did a great job as a mockup. It's a great concept to start from. The other concepts inviting, you know, involving other members of the community in the art and such is that, but I think that could then be part of the selection process, whether it comes back to the committee or whether it comes back to the council as a whole, to have the firms present their ideas of how they turn that, the concept into reality, then negotiate a price or a fee from the selected firm and then move forward. Then council would obviously follow the normal decision process from there.
Eric, do you think of any other steps that need be added?
I think that makes good sense as a process to get to a design.
Okay, great. Everybody's nodding the affirmative. I thank the work of the subcommittee, or the committee, and it sounds like your work isn't quite over yet, though. So please, continue on, continue on. What's that? Keep the model, keep the model.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember?
I think what they did was an excellent job, but I have a couple of concerns. We could have put a street traffic signal there for 250,000. We're already up to 500,000 on the roundabout, and by the time we do the other, we'll be probably pretty close to a million. And yet we've got streets that we were told that are in poor condition, and we can't get them fixed for two or three years. Just on the very fact that we've got to have some common sense here, can we afford what we're trying to do on this? Are you all saying what we need to do for Raymore is worth a million dollars over to get, to move the traffic through there? I don't know, I'm just asking you all. It seems a little high to me when I think about the streets that I pass that need some bad work. I mean, they need some work on them pretty seriously.
I would offer that nothing is moving forward unless there's a majority of the council that want to do it. And I would also refer back to the comment that I made earlier, this arts commission, can that be a 501(c)(3) or, and if it can't, there would be other ways to do it similar to what we've done with the, it's not the park board, it's the park foundation. Thank you, Park Foundation. So it's conceivable to me that this feature could be perhaps a joint, a design by the city and then funded through contributions of the citizens of the city, or some other...
You think maybe we might get a grant then?
Well, I'm not going to try to say that we're going to get anything until we know what we're up against. Councilmember Boehner?
I will say that during some of the discussions that we had, there were some ideas that were thrown around about having the community, not only that the students participate in developing some of the artwork that's a part of it, but also having the community involved in perhaps gathering the materials and donating the materials and becoming part of the project in that way. So that we really have looked at some alternatives so that the burden, the entire burden is not levied upon the city itself.
Well, if we make it out of bricks, we can have names on bricks, fifty dollars each, you know? Anyway, I'm really disappointed that the committee didn't elect to put the statue of the mayor in the center. But I understand, I understand that the mayor can sometimes change and we then have excess statues, so. Are there any other items this evening? Great. In that case, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.